Thank you. Good afternoon, my name is Chris Leek and I'm the Chair of the City County Planning Board. Happy New Year to everyone. I now call to order the January 13th, 2021 meeting, which will be conducted remotely. Due to the state of emergency, all Planning Board members are participating remotely. I will now ask our acting Planning Director, Chris Murphy, to call the roll.
Before I started talking, I wanted to make sure that I was not muted. Just got back from the County Commissioners Briefing, so I'm kind of a little unorganized here. I normally have a little more time to get ready, but I will call the roll now. George Bryan.
Here.
Melinda Donegan.
Here.
Walter Farabee.
Here.
Jason Grubbs.
Here.
Clarence Lamb.
Here.
Chris Leek.
Here.
Mo McCray.
I don't see Ms. McCray.
I think she indicates she may be a little late. So I'll mark her as a no at this point. Brenda Smith.
Here.
And Jack Steelman.
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. When there is a vote today, a roll call vote will be conducted. Each Board Member will be recognized and asked to clearly state their vote for the record. All guests participating in this remote meeting, either through Zoom or by phone, will remain muted until recognized by the Board for comment. Today's meeting is being broadcast live on TV 13 and is also being livestreamed on the city's website. The meeting will also be replayed on TV 13 tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m. and Sunday at 4:00 p.m. Our first order of business today will be the consent agenda. These are items with which the petitioner is requesting withdrawal or continuance or items with which staff has recommended approval and no one has signed up to speak in opposition. For our public hearings today, each side will have a total of 12 minutes. There is no rebuttal period. Once you have been recognized by the Board, staff will unmute your microphone so that you can provide your comments. After the public hearing is closed and the Board goes into work session, no one is permitted to speak unless the Planning Board asks them a question. The items under Section B of our agenda will require final approval by the elected body, either the City Council or County Commissioners. As such, votes taken today are recommendations, which are considered by the City Council or Board of Commissioners during this review of the requests. For special use zoning requests, the petitioner must identify the intended use or uses of the site and give specific details on how the site will be developed. If you are addressing the Board today, we would ask that before you begin your comments, please give us your name, address, and zip code for the record. Our first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the December 9th meetings. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, this is Clarence, move approval.
Move by Mr. Lamb.
Second.
Second by Mr. Grubbs, any discussion? Mr. Murphy, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, George Bryan.
Yes.
Melinda Donegan.
Yes.
Walter Farabee.
Yes.
Jason Grubbs.
Yes.
Clarence Lamb.
Yes.
Chris Leek.
Yes.
Brenda Smith.
Yes.
Jack Steelman.
Yes. And, and sir, and, um, um, Board Members and Staff, if I could ask for one special request before we get started today, which would be for those inclined to please share with me in a moment of silence in memory of Chairman Leek's father. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much, that was very kind. All right, before we turn this over to Mr. Corley, I do want to recognize, I think, the Council Member Kevin Monday on the call. So thank you for joining us today, Council Member Monday. I don't see any other elected officials, so again, thank you for joining.
My pleasure, thank you.
Our pleasure. Mr. Corley, I'm going to now turn it over to you for the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon, Members of the Board. As usual, I'm going to share my screen and then ask you what you can see. Full screen or presentation view?
Full screen now.
Lovely, all right. So first, I want to let the Board know about three cases that are going to be continued to the February meeting. The first one, W 3415, was also continued from the December meeting. And this is the second automatic continuance, which means if it gets continued again, it will move forward without a recommendation from the Planning Board. F 1612 and F 1613, this is their first automatic continuance. We're hoping that those will be able to actually move forward at the February meeting, but those are three items that you will not hear tonight. So the first item on the consent agenda is B2, which is case W 3513. This is a property on South Stratford Road. The proposal is to rezone from HB and RS9 to GBS. The site is a little smaller than one acre and it's at the northwest corner of South Stratford Road and Southwest View Drive. Excuse me. Here's a proposed site plan. The proposal would demolish the existing buildings on the site and replace them with this multi-tenant building that's pulled up to the intersection of Westview Drive and Stratford Road. There's an existing access easement along the northern boundary of the site, which is also the rear of the site at this point, that allows, I'm sorry, follows the northern boundary. And there's some existing vegetation along that boundary as well that's going to serve as their buffer yard and their tree save. In addition to what you see right now, there's a note on the site plan that is requesting alternative compliance for the required buffer yard along the northern boundary. This is due to the existing asphalt pavement that's already there and the need to maintain the access easement that's also there. They would utilize existing vegetation and supplement it as necessary, but what's there provides a pretty good screen and meets the intent of the buffer yard provisions. Here are the elevations that were submitted with the request. This is similar to the Party City Building that's nearby. These are the same developers. So this building is going to look like that one. The street-facing facades are articulated and include street-level transparency and doors to engage pedestrians. I also want to bring to the Board's attention just an additional condition to highlight that freestanding signage would only be allowed on Stratford Road and not on Westview Drive. The site plan meets all UDO standards with the alternative compliance, so staff is supportive of this request and I would be glad to answer any questions.
Chris Leek.
Yes, sir.
I wanted to bring to Mr. Corley's attention and Mr. Murphy's attention. My, my book had only a picture of now what I see is, is the elevation. And therefore, I missed this on my ride around and didn't realize we were going to be handling because I didn't see an agenda in the planning book as well. But I, I hope we can pay attention to see that in the future.
Thank you, if staff would please note that.
We will, thank you.
I just have one question, please.
Yes, sir.
In, in the notes in the book and online, I would just like to ask, what is meant by a proposed pedestrian connection between the two driveways?
A proposed pedestrian connection between the two driveways?
Yes, sir.
That's a reference to this crosswalk that, that will take a pedestrian from the public sidewalk on Westview Drive across the driveway in the rear of the property.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Corley or staff? All right, I don't see any. Mr. Murphy, do we have anyone here to speak on this case?
Mr. Chairman, there is no one here in opposition. I know that the petitioner is here if there are any questions, but it's my understanding there is no opposition. Mr. Chairman, I would just also like to note that Planning Board Member McCray has now joined the meeting, so whenever we do the roll call vote, she will be a participant on this vote.
All right, thank you very kindly. Okay, well, seeing no one here, I thank the Crystal Office for coming. I'm going to close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, this is Clarence. I move that the Planning Board find that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs, any discussion? Murphy, would you please call the roll?
George Bryan.
I'll abstain since I didn't get a chance to look at this.
Melinda Donegan.
Yes.
Walter Farabee.
Yes.
Jason Grubbs.
Yes.
Clarence Lamb.
Yes.
Chris Leek.
Yes.
Mo McCray.
Yeah.
Brenda Smith.
Yes.
Jack Steelman.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, this is Clarence again. I further move that the Planning Board recommend approval of W 3513.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs, any discussion? Mr. Murphy, would you please call the roll?
Uh, Mr. Bryan.
I abstain.
Ms. Donegan.
Yes.
Mr. Farabee.
Yes.
Mr. Grubbs.
Yes.
Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Mr. Leek.
Yes.
Ms. McCray.
Yeah.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Steelman.
Yes.
All right. The next item on the consent agenda is B3, which is case W 3514. This is a site plan amendment for a manual retirement village on eight and a half acres on the north side of Barbara Jane Avenue, west of Chandler Street and Galaxy Court. This request is fairly simple. It would replace a community center on the original approved plan, which you're seeing on the left, and I've highlighted with a blue cloud, with a duplex building, which you see on the right side, also highlighted with a blue cloud. It's similar to the other duplex buildings that are already on the site. That's the only change. I do want to highlight this condition, and you may have seen it in the comments for this case. The, the property is already under construction right now, so they have started to develop the stormwater, the stormwater control measure that was required with the original approval. Joe may mention that he had not seen the ASBIL records that are required to go along with that to make sure that the device is functioning. So this condition would just require, prior to the issuance of any permits, that they submit the ASBIL records for that stormwater device. Site plan meets UDO requirements and staff recommends approval of this request.
Are there any questions for staff, Mr. Bryan?
Yes, Mr. Corley, you say is already under building. This is a built-out development, right? And they're just adding to it these duplexes.
Right, I'm not sure that they build everything that was originally approved, but it is already fairly built out, yes. And this would just swap out one of the buildings from the approved plan for something else.
Okay, I, I'm assuming it's the same place that I, that I knew and saw, which is a sort of a gated development there, or elderly, right?
Yes.
It's, it's been there for a while, yeah, okay.
Any further questions? All right, seeing no one, I'm going to now see, do we have anyone here, Mr. Murphy, to speak on this particular case?
Mr. Chairman, there is not anyone here in opposition.
All right.
And I'm, and I'm unsure, and I believe the petitioner is here as well.
All right, thank them for coming. I'm going to close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, this is Clarence. I move that the Planning Board find that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs, any discussion? Murphy, would you please call the roll?
Uh, George Bryan.
Yes.
Melinda Donegan.
Yes.
Walter Farabee.
Yes.
Jason Grubbs.
Yes.
Clarence Lamb.
Yes.
Chris Leek.
Yes.
Mo McCray.
Yeah.
Brenda Smith.
Yes.
Jack Steelman.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman, this is Clarence again. I further move that the Planning Board recommend approval of W 3514.
A motion by Mr. Lamb.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bryan. Any discussion? Mr. Murphy, would you please call the roll?
George Bryan.
Yes.
Melinda Donegan.
Yes.
Walter Farabee.
Yes.
Jason Grubbs.
Yes.
Clarence Lamb.
Yes.
Chris Leek.
Yes.
Mo McCray.
Yeah.
Brenda Smith.
Yes.
Jack Steelman.
Yes.
All right, we're going to move on to the Planning Board reviews. So the next item is C1, which is our first cottage court. The property is on the west side of Turner Street, north of Wayne Avenue, and it's about 1.26 acres. Uh, here's the proposed site plan for the cottage court. It does meet all of the UDO use-specific standards for cottage courts that were developed last year, including the required perimeter buffer yards, the courtyard open space, and the number of lots. So since this meets the UDO requirement, staff is recommending approval and I will be glad to answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman, this is Clarence, I move approval.
Okay.
Can I ask a question for, I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance.
All right. Okay, there's, I think I see two hands. I think I saw Mr. Bryan first and then Ms. Donegan.
Well, I'll defer to Ms. Donegan and then I'll ask you.
Okay, Mr. Corley, I just wanted, just, just for clarity, to understand the courtyard, you know, I, I'm assuming the courtyard is the area with the little pathways between the units, is that correct?
So the courtyard open space includes that area. The main courtyard open space is this one that I'm circling with the cursor.
And, and will, will the courtyard be, will there be any plantings in there or would just be completely open?
As required by the UDO, yes, there will be plantings there.
Okay, but that's not, doesn't have to be specified on the site plan?
So the site plan is showing this symbol right here where, if you can see my cursor, is a tree.
Right.
This site plan prepared usually uses this to indicate a large variety tree. And then it looks like there are smaller trees adjacent to that tree. But at this point, we wouldn't know exactly how they plan to landscape the area. We would get a detailed landscape plan when they apply for their development permits.
Okay, all right, thank you, that, that helps. I just wanted to understand where the actual courtyard part of it was. Thank you.
That's my question, Mr. Corley, as well, because I, I've seen these pictures when we approved it of an idyllic courtyard and a mental separating people and things like this, and, and this has thrown me, but I'm assuming it, it, it follows the guidelines, so thank you.
All right, any additional questions? We do have a previous motion on the floors that still holds, is there a second?
Second.
All right, uh, Mr. Murphy, would you please call the roll?
Uh, George Bryan.
Yes.
Melinda Donegan.
Yes.
Walter Farabee.
Yes.
Jason Grubbs.
Yes.
Clarence Lamb.
Yes.
Chris Leek.
Yes.
Mo McCray.
Yeah.
Brenda Smith.
Yes.
Jack Steelman.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Corley, before we go into B2, we have, we do have a Board Member, Mr. Clarence Lamb, who has requested to be recused from this particular agenda item. We need to put that to a motion, I get someone to motion and second for approval for Mr. Lamb to be recused.
I'll submit.
Second.
Move by Mr. Steelman. Thinking about Mr. Farabee, Mr. Murphy, would you please call the roll?
George Bryan.
Yes.
Melinda Donegan.
Yes.
Walter Farabee.
Yes.
Jason Grubbs.
Yes.
Clarence Lamb.
Yes.
Chris Leek.
Yes.
Mo McCray.
Yeah.
Brenda Smith.
Yes.
Jack Steelman.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Lamb, you are recused. If you would just cut off your microphone and your video and we'll get you when we're finished.
Thank you.
All right, so the next item is C2, it's another planning board review. This one is for a residential development on 67.29 acres out in the county on the east side of Kerner Road, just south of Vance Road. There are 71 proposed lots in this PRD. It meets the standards for open space and connectivity, as you can see in the southern portion of the site. It extends existing stub streets from the south. It meets all the UDO requirements, so staff is recommending approval of this request. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
I don't see any questions, would anyone like to make a motion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is Melinda Donegan. I'd like to make it a motion to approve this item.
Actually.
We have a motion.
Could, could you hold off for just a minute, Ms. Donegan, on that?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I actually am going to need to recuse myself as well on this.
All right, we have another recusal. We need someone to make a motion for this, please.
I move to, to allow Jason to recuse himself.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. McCray, is there a second?
I can, I can.
Second by Mr. Bryan. Uh, Mr. Murphy, would you please call the roll?
Yes, and this is on the recusal. George Bryan.
Yes.
Melinda Donegan.
Yes.
Walter Farabee.
Yes.
Jason Grubbs.
Yes. I don't know that I can vote on recusing myself, but.
Well, under Robert's rules of order, I'm not exactly sure, so I'm just playing it safe. Clarence Lamb, of course, he's already been recused. Chris Leek.
Yes.
Mo McCray.
Yeah.
Brenda Smith.
Yes.
Jack Steelman.
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Grubbs, if you could follow the same instructions, if you mute yourself and take, uh, thank you, video down. All right, motion, is there a motion for approval for C2?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move approval on this, on C2.
All right, motion by Ms. Donegan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Farabee.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Murphy, would you please call the roll?
George Bryan.
Yes.
Melinda Donegan.
Yes.
Walter Farabee.
Yes.
Chris Leek.
Yes.
Mo McCray.
Yeah.
Brenda Smith.
Yes.
Jack Steelman.
Yes.
All right. Mr. Lamb and Mr. Grubbs, if you would, you can turn your cameras back on and mute, and unmute yourself.
Okay. Last item on the consent agenda is C3. This is another PRD on 74 and a half acres at the northwest corner of Bethel Church Road and Pumpkin Ridge Road. This one is also out in the county and it also proposes 71 lots. It meets the UDO requirements for PRDs for open space and connectivity. Staff recommends approval of this request and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Mr. Bryan.
Mr. Corley, um, this, this has recently been, or within the last few years, been lumbered. How, so how does a tree save work out in a situation like this?
There isn't a tree save area requirement in for South County's jurisdiction.
Oh, that's right, okay, thank you very much.
All right, that's, no other questions, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, this is Clarence, I move approval.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs. Uh, Mr. Murphy, would you please call the roll?
George Bryan.
Yes.
Melinda Donegan.
Yes.
Walter Farabee.
Yes.
Jason Grubbs.
Yes.
Clarence Lamb.
Yes.
Chris Leek.
Yes.
Mo McCray.
Yeah.
Brenda Smith.
Yes.
Jack Steelman.
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, those are all of the items on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Corley. We're now going to go into our staff report. I'll turn it over to Mr. Murphy for our staff report.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just real briefly, I don't have the two items. The first item, I will turn it back to Mr. Corley for a preview of your February caseload.
All right, as I mentioned before, we have three items that were continued from this meeting that will be continued to February. We have two new zoning petitions, one is a final development plan on East Haynesville Road and the other is an apartment proposal off of Vessmell Road, I believe. And then we have a proposed text amendment and another planning board review for our subdivision.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Chairman and Board, the, the only other item I have under staff report is just an update on UDO CC15. Of course, this item was heard by the Planning Board back in November. It went to committee in December. It went to council that their meeting in, on the first Monday of January. At that meeting, it was continued for a month in order for there to be a public informational session on UDO CC15, which is the ADU text amendment. We are in the process of putting that together. There will be a webinar that will start at 6:00 p.m. on Tuesday, January 25th, where we'll give a detailed presentation, kind of building from the basics up through what the ordinance will do. And then we'll have a, a period of question and, uh, question and answer that will be handled through chat and through the phone-in number that will, that's included with the link, it's included in the, in the actual webinar. And so, like I said, staff's in the process of, of planning that and there should be some public, publica, it should be publicized starting next week marketing and communications. We will also send the information out to everyone that, that either sent in comments prior to it going to the Planning Board or the council or that spoke at either of those meetings. So we will be sending those folks a, a link to the meeting. But again, it also will be publicized on the city's social media and perhaps some other avenues as well. And with that, that's, that concludes my staff report.
All right, thank you so much.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, just to interrupt. Chris, would you like me to give the preview of the work session as is customary? I'm sorry, yes, you should, but I believe that, I believe Ms. Donegan may have had a question related to my last item.
I did, if, if I could jump in just for a sec. So, Mr. Murphy, I just wanted to clarify what you said about the question and answer through chat and phone number. Does that mean that people can, that's, can phone in like a Zoom meeting and all hear the questions and the answers? Or will these be individual question-answer kind of situations?
It will be, it will be wholly done within the webinar. Whenever folks call in, it, that, that, their audio should be audible. Folks should be able to hear it and then, so they would hear the question and, again, we would give the answer. You know, again, what we're encouraging folks to do and what we will be encouraging folks to do when we send out the, the information is that they have site-specific questions, that they try to work with us offline on that as opposed to bogging it down where, you know, everyone wants to know, well, my neighbor has this or my property does this. It's more focused on the general nature of what the regulations will and will not allow someone to do. But the actual, uh, the actual information will be audible as part of the. Audible as part of the. As part of the webinar and it's my understanding, the, the way we have it working right now is that Kirk will be the moderator of it and Amy and I will do a lot of the Q and A.
Okay, so. So when, when you join the, the webinar, you have the option of being able to connect through your phone. To ask the question. Is that the way, the way it's gonna work?
I'll have to defer to someone other than myself because I'm not a webinar expert. It's my understanding that. In a webinar and the reason why we're doing it this way.
Oh, you could do it. You could type in your question. Okay.
Right, yeah, you type in the question via chat and then if you, if you don't, if you're not as technologically, technologically savvy as some folks, you could call in to ask the question, but. If it's in chat, it should be able to be seen, but Kirk will, you know, Kirk or whoever's moderating will, you know. Obviously read what the question is. If it's a phone call, it will be audible to all those in the audience.
Okay, that makes a lot of sense. Thanks.
Uh huh. And Kirk, and I'm sorry, and actually, you know, again, as my afternoon got kind of compacted with the county commissioners meeting, Kirk, I was gonna reach out on. If you had any other items for the, for the update and of course, we haven't had, we haven't had a work session since October, so. I neglected even write it down, but yes, Kirk, go ahead and give us a preview of what will be on the work session for later this month.
All right, good afternoon, board members. Just very briefly, we've got three items going to work session in January. As is customary at this time of the year, I'll be presenting the mid-year update on the work program. David Reed is going to be presenting a report on a potential. Well, there was a potential research on a text amendment related to minor subdivisions in the U D O. As, as various other text amendments were implemented in recent years, staff feels that that's no longer necessary. And David's gonna explain why that is the case. And the last item, Tiffany White is, is working in conjunction with the city and county attorneys. On a text amendment that will decriminalize zoning violations. And that's in response to Senate Bill three hundred that the state legislature recently passed. So. Again, it should be a pretty good work session, but not as lengthy as maybe some of the ones that we had a few months ago. Thank you all.
Thank you. So the next item on our agenda is a closed session. Before we go and get a motion to go into closed session. I did want to, I've recognized council member Monday. I did want to recognize our new assistant city manager on the call, Aaron King. Aaron, I think. Congratulations are in order for you officially. And then I also see Dr. Barnett. I don't think I've had the opportunity to meet Dr. Barnett. He started. I think September of two thousand and twenty as the new director of human resources, so. Dr. Barnett, it's good to see you on the call and hopefully at some point in the very near future, we'll all have a chance to. See each other face to face, but welcome to officially Winston-Salem, North Carolina. All right, so with that, we need to, a motion to go into closed session. And then once we finish with that business, we will come out of closed session.
So. I'm sorry.
All right, we have.
I think we got a little specific language, so this is, this is Clarence, Mr. Chairman, and I move. At the planning board going to closed session pursuant to North County General Statutes, section one forty three dash three eighteen dot one one, little a, six. Consider the qualifications of those who've applied for the position of planning director. And pursuant to North County General Statutes, section one forty three. Dash three eighteen dot one one, little a, one. To prevent the disclosure of information considered confidential pursuant to North County General Statutes, section one sixty eight dash one sixty eight. That's my motion.
And the motion is there second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stillman. Mr. Murphy, would you please call the roll?
George Bryan?
Yes.
Melinda Donegan?
Yes.
Walter Farabee?
Yes.
Jason Grubbs?
Yes.
Clarence Lamb?
Yes.
Chris Leake?
Yes.
Mo McCray?
Yeah.
Brenda Smith?
Yes.
Jack Stillman?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the board at this time, at this time, I believe Brian is going to move. You all into a breakout room and I believe Brian is gonna confirm that that is not being broadcast and then he will. Let you know that you're good to go and then whenever you're finished with closed session, I believe Mr. King's gonna come out and let Brian know. He'll move you out of the breakout room, back into the main. Meeting and from there you can adjourn. So have a good evening, everyone.
Evening, thank you.
All right, everyone, hold on.
All right, looks like everybody's here. Can I get a motion to go back into open session, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is Clarence. I move the planning board go back into open session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Grubbs. Mr. Murphy, would you please call? Oh, yeah, Mr. Murphy, would you please call the roll?
He may be gone. I'll do it for him.
All right.
Linda Dunnigan. I think that was a yes. You're on mute. Okay.
It's a yes, I'm sorry.
All right, Clarence Lamb?
Yes.
Jack Steelman?
Yes.
George Bryan?
Yes.
Mo McPray?
Yeah.
Brenda Smith?
Yes.
Chris Leek?
Yes.
Jason Grubbs?
Yes.
All right.
One more.
Oh, Walter, I'm sorry. I went in the order on my screen and I missed you there, so.
Yes.
Same on you, sir. All right then, do we have a motion for adjournment?
I have a motion with a capital A, as Clarence was saying earlier, adjourned.
Is there a second? All right, everyone have a great evening.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.